Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. I hope everyone had good holidays and safe holidays and a happy new year to everyone. I hope the new year brings us some light at the end of the tunnel as we go through the rest of this school year and the overall year. I'd like to call this special meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Saturday, January 9th, at 8:30 a.m. in the board meeting room. With that, going to the agenda. Dr. Adley, update on school opening.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you here and also to those who are participating virtually. And again, happy new year to everyone and a healthy, more than anything, a healthy, safe new year. I'll just take a couple of minutes if I can just to update the board and those who are watching, just a couple of COVID-related matters. Certainly, we've had some developments since last we spoke and with the plan to come back to school this particular week when we went virtual. So that's another, I'll just make a comment, another factor to make a comment on and to bring people up to speed, that's the way that was done. So there are a couple of issues I'd just like to address quickly, the cases, the metrics, the decision back into remote decision, how that was done, the quarantine practice that we have in place, plans for vaccination for our staff. And then you can see the rest of the comments that we're talking about. Most, well, actually, I'll just go to the metrics first of all. These metrics are actually, as of today, obviously, January 6th, it says, oh, actually, that's fair, they've just updated, as of today, that number is 32 on the current cases, 56 on the quarantine, 139 on the cumulative cases, and cumulative quarantine, 1,145. And tonight, the update thus far is that we have at least 10 cases that I've just been appraised about. So after this board meeting, we'll see what the final number is and perhaps at least you will have it for me this evening. But again, just as an update, that's as of January 3rd, those totals are 32, 56, 139, and 1,145. Our own cases for Darien, it's last reported on the 26th, 115 cases and 37.8 per 100,000. So over, over the last couple of months, if you were looking at like November 19th, we were at 26.3. Then we have the 37.8 at the sort of Christmas break, so to speak. And as of today, it's 34.1. So you can see we're, we're, we're just sort of steady in that regard. We're still high and hasn't, it's gone up at Christmas, but it has come down again. So it's just sort of fairly, fairly static at the moment, but, but it's still high in that regard. So if I may, I'll just comment on, on the decision, I might just bring people up to speed, the intent, and I want to be very, very clear about this. My first priority is the health of these and the staff that work here. And that's the only reason I made the decision, the final decision in regard to what mode we are in. There are different factors that go into that, but that is my only, well, motivation and biggest and first responsibility and priority of health and safety of our children and our staff in the building. So over the break, after the Christmas break, after the Christmas holiday, I thought it very appropriate, if I'm going to change models, I have to consult with our medical advisors. You and I are not medical professionals. Certainly, I can bring stuff to the table, but I can't bring the medical expertise to the table. So I believe it was the 30th when I had, I called a meeting with our medical advisors, our health department and our, our district medical advisor and also Alicia. And I will say this for people, I actually was thinking we were coming back and that's an honest appraisal, because I think that's what you want, a verbal honesty, right?
I'm sorry, Dr. Adley, can you repeat that last slide?
Yes, I actually called the meeting thinking that we would be back in, in the mode that we left, right? Elementary full in and hybrid. With that being said, the process is a mutually, mutual process of decision-making. During that particular meeting, it came clear that the sentiments of our medical advisors were that they were very, very concerned about the amount of travel that they are, that they have experienced through contact tracing and knowledge of the community. They were very concerned about the gatherings that were taking place that they were aware of. They're extremely concerned about the possibility of delays in results. And the ultimate decision was made collaboratively to defer for another five days and that the decision is made in terms of safety, but also to protect what we actually want to do, which is have the children in. We're not disputing, nor are our teachers, that the best place for our kids is essentially in, back in school as quickly as we can, right? And as safely as we can. In order to achieve that, it was in the best interest of everyone in the district and the community to keep everybody out for a week, for another five days. That was why the decision was made. That's the only reason why the decision was made there. And that's simply a collaborative process. Yes, there are other factors that go into that. What's the readiness in the schools? Are our staff ready to, or do we have available staffs? I certainly was concerned about, I was certainly concerned about coming back on Monday and having a significant disruption, but I had that concern like before the break. So I had, I did have that concern before the break, but that was significantly elevated during that meeting. But the bottom line, it was the health and safety and also with protecting what I hope is a future opportunity to go back to school in the in-person mode, or at least in the in-person mode for elementary children and, and the hybrid mode for secondary levels. That was, that was the only motivation that those decisions were made. We do have our medical advisors present this evening because they're part of that particular process, if you certainly want to have that discussion, but staffing is always a consideration too. But to be honest with you, the staff, and for the most part, well, first of all, our staff have been coming to school. I mean, they've done a remarkable job in terms of personal days and sick days. They're not too much different than they, than they have been. So they have been coming to school and they've been doing the right thing, but there have been a couple, there's been one incident at middle school where we just couldn't staff it, right? It just got to the point where it just wasn't feasible to staff and you couldn't run the buildings. People were being pulled from special services, support services, and we just didn't also have enough coverage. Royal was getting to that point. I mean, Royal was at a, at a point of, I guess, so many subs in the building and so many people just trying to hang on and provide service there that I was concerned, I was getting to the point of being very, very concerned about that and possibly closing that school, either for a day or for, for a period of time. If you're asking, well, what goes into that? Well, I leaned very, very heavily, not just on metrics, but on the culture of the school, the practices of the school, what the principals tell me is happening, what I'm observing is actually happening. And also, I come down to a trust factor of that. We put all those factors together and it's a complication with our, our medical advisor. I have a final decision to make there, and that's a collaborative, a collaborative decision to make. It's just not a straight line, a straightforward process, but there is no intent to mislead the board, there is no intent to mislead my teachers, and there's certainly no intent to mislead my community members and my parents. And about has raised and it has been raised. I'm sorry, that's perception, but that's the only, the only focus I have is keeping your children safe. And we're in a pandemic and we're going to continue to have to make changes as we move forward. And I respect, certainly I respect our parents' concerns, there's no problem with that. But I just want to share with you, that is essentially the process that we go through in order to make a decision. It's not just, it's not just, yes, certainly, it's these numbers to some degree, that's one factor, and then the other factor is other points of data and other, other qualitative and quantitative input. That's, that's really the decision. That's why it's been made. I will say this, that we had the same discussion yesterday. And upon that discussion, we will be returning to school with elementary full in and middle school and high school back in the hybrid model, starting on Monday. I think some questions that might come up are, well, what might change that? Well, if some of the metrics start to fall, then that might, that might change it. But that would be a big thing and also in the consultation of what our health, our director of health and their medical advisor are seeing on the ground. And I think that the district has, actually, I would say to you, they have led the way in many areas, your staff, from March to start of this fall and the quality of education that we're trying to provide to kids. It's a perfect, it's not a perfect model we're working in. Certainly, everybody would respect everybody doing their best and I respect that, right? But I think we're doing more than doing our best. I think we're doing what's right for children and delivering as quality an education as we possibly can and a high educational experience for kids. So I just want to make that clear because I know it's confusing. I apologize, people, for what seemed to be a last minute decision, but I make a decision, if I have a meeting on the 30th with, with medical advisors, I can't just turn that around, right? Have other meetings and communications to do with principals and getting them together, having plans together, have communication, so as soon as you make the announcement, you have to be ready to go. I certainly don't want to make a last minute decision, but, but in some cases, that might be dependent on the vacation or the time period, or at least may, or may give that perception. So we will be coming back with the intent of, or the, well, the intent is to come back and the, the thought process is that hopefully, we may have seen some of these time periods where the quarantines have played out and the cases have played out and have been identified. I'll stop there before I talk about any other sort of metric here or sorry, any other item I have on here, like 180 days and that type of stuff, because I've got our medical advisors on, and this might be a good point to, to stop if you have a question from any one of them, do the medical advisors want to say anything? Well, I see Dr. Kenneth Fekter and my eyes are not as good as they used to be for David, but let, is Mr. Knox there, David there? He may be on a ferry, actually. Which probably doesn't sign hopeful. I might not know if you've taken a question from John or if you want to go to the medical advisors.
Yes, nobody's from the medical side wants to speak.
I think, well, Dr. Kenneth Fekter might, if he's invited to. Dr. Kenneth Fekter, can you hear us?
I can, if you can hear me, yeah.
If you could speak just a little louder, it would be appreciated, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to, Dr. Adley, thank you.
Go ahead.
So I want to say to Alicia and David, I think it'd be pretty impressive, you're sitting in that meeting, how well that, that team works together and advocating for, for, for our children. So I just want to make that point because these people are committed their times and their talents and so on, go for it and do a tremendous job for us. Anyway, with that, Dr. Kenneth Fekter, I think you have a floor.
Thank you. I've got a little bit of an echo, so bear, bear with me here. I wanted to echo what Dr. Adley just said, which is, I think, the, the team and the process that we put together to monitor the situation is, is really working very well. We have an excellent working relationship and, and very good communication. And, and again, our overarching goal is to keep the, the staff and students as safe as possible in the midst of this, this pandemic. There was a lot of planning on the part of the town and the state, looking at, you know, all the, the parameters for, for running school during a pandemic and not really knowing the natural course of this brand-new disease. And I was just on a, you know, conference call with the State Department of Education and, and Department of Health and the state epidemiologist, Dr. Carter, was, like many of us, amazed that it, that the school districts were still not being significant sources of community spread or cases, despite case rates in the community that we would have anticipated would require shutdown of the, of schools in most districts. And in fact, many districts or most districts have had, have been able to keep hybrid and some in-person learning going despite case rates that are quite in excess of what we'd planned for in the summer. We've been following the data very carefully and in Darien and like most of the communities in Connecticut, schools do not seem to be a significant source of community spread. Most of the spread we see are, are from events and activities outside of a school. Of course, there's a lot of people in a few buildings, so inevitably, there'll be, be some spread because we are in the middle of a pandemic and probably in its worst phase right now. But COVID has not seemed to be a significant pediatric disease and it has not seemed to be that the, the kids who get it and the staff members who, who may get it have not been effective in transmitting it to others. Most of the quarantines we've done have not resulted in additional cases. And all of this argues, including our numbers, that the mitigation strategies that are in place to reduce the risk of spread are very effective in schools, probably more effective there than on almost any place else in the community, except maybe healthcare settings where we take extensive pains, you know, to control the possibility of, of spread. I want, I want to really thank Alicia because she's been doing an amazing amount of work under difficult circumstances to keep, you know, everyone safe and to track down these cases. I think we've had very effective contact tracing in our town, unlike many other parts of the country. So, so I'm very optimistic with the elementary school kids going back to, to in-person learning and the older kids in, in hybrid mode. And we will have to see how things go. Many experts are predicting the next few weeks are going to be very difficult times for infection. If there's any sense of, of luck to it, I think Connecticut, because we had that early surge, though we're seeing large numbers of cases, we're not seeing the severity that we saw in the spring. And our healthcare system still has capacity, unlike the desperate situation that's in many other parts of, of the country. There's also hope with, you know, vaccines beginning to, to roll out in the state. Many healthcare workers, probably most have been done, and the next phase will include teachers, which will again greatly increase the, the, the safety of, of in-person education. So with that, I just stop and see if there's any questions that anyone might have that, that I could answer for them.
Thank you, Dr. Kenneth Fekter. Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, thank you both for the explanation. In order to...
Is your mic on, John?
In order to, you know, maintain the continuity of in-person learning when we go in, is there anything from a medical standpoint or from a, you know, site management standpoint that we can add? And I think about things, we've had discussions about testing and there's a cost benefit analysis, having to do that, but to help our staff, you know, maintain onsite learning on, on the testing side, or I think about organizing vaccinations from a townwide level or even a district level once, you know, it's our teacher's turn. And or, you know, further extending the net to add, yes, substitute staff or temporary staff to, to fill the need while our staff is quarantining or facing an illness within their own family. So you open it up to both Dr. Adley and your medical professionals on that.
I'll let Dr. Kenneth Fekter speak, if he doesn't mind, about the testing, because that's a discussion, Mr. Seeny, that has come up fairly frequently, actually, and we've responded in the same way. And we do have a bullet here talking about the vaccination for teachers, but certainly, I don't know if David is back on just yet, but either David or Kim can talk about it and I can also talk about it, as can Alicia. But regarding the idea of testing and what that offers or doesn't offer in terms of keeping everybody in school, Dr. Kenneth Fekter, could you just, would you mind addressing that again for us, please?
Hopefully, you heard me.
Sorry, I muted myself. Many people prefer me that way, so. So let me, yes, regarding the testing issue, as many of you may know, the CDC hasn't really recommended large-scale testing of, in, in schools. And that's for a variety of practical reasons. One is it's really hard to test large numbers of people without putting them all in one place at the same time, which may actually do more harm than good by exposing a lot of people. Secondly, the testing for asymptomatic people, the rapid antigen tests, which are the, the quickest tests, are not really as accurate in people without symptoms. They do have usefulness in screening people with symptoms because they give us a very quick answer, but they're not, they, they have a very high false negative rate for people who do not have symptoms. The better testing, which is the molecular testing or, or PCR testing, usually takes hours or days to get back, and so it's not really as practical for, for this kind of a mass screening. And the other thing with the, the screening, unless you do it every day, and in a perfect world, we would do it every day, but we don't have that kind of testing capacity, it's a, it's a, a point in time. So someone could test negative on Monday and be contagious on Wednesday. So unless you're doing very frequent screenings, which again means you're lining everybody up, it, it's not very practical for closed populations like college campuses where everyone's in place and doesn't leave, it can be a very effective strategy. Many colleges that have effectively controlled COVID have done that by essentially closing their campus and testing everybody and testing frequently. But I, I don't know that testing would do much more than provide a false sense of security to the students and staff because of its, its significant limits.
I'm sorry, I meant more of a convenience level for staff to, you know, give them...
Yeah, that, that would be wonderful. Again, in a perfect world, we'd have much more available testing, and I think a lot of testing sites are still struggling with, with capacity just because of the, the huge number of cases we're seeing right now in, in the pandemic. We're seeing, for, you know, for my own patients, it's, it's getting more challenging to get testing times and the reporting is still pretty good, but it's still taking at least two to three days to get results from most testing centers. I also heard a question about the vaccinations. It looks, you know, it's all a question of, of supply. I saw an email from David today about that. Teachers will likely be in the 1B category, which is the next category to be offered, and the logistics are currently being worked out in the town, once we get a little more guidance from the state.
Just, can I follow up on that, just real quick?
This is Richie.
Regarding the vaccine, so the vaccine will be available in Darien, will that be available in Darien for Darien teachers during that 1B phase? Do we know that yet?
That's, that's the goal, yes. We, we're still waiting for guidance from the state, whether they're going to still use the same vaccine administration software system or whether it's going to be a, a different. But depending upon the number of doses that are given, teachers and essential workers are in the next, next round. But we're still waiting for guidance. We should get it either maybe tomorrow or early next week, hopefully from the state.
Good evening, this is, this is David, and I do have some information about the next round. We have the roster for teachers and, at the health department, and we will be uploading that into the system. So hopefully, within two weeks or so, teachers will be eligible to be vaccinated. And that won't be just in Darien, they can go to any of the vaccine sites and sign up. Teachers, it doesn't have to be in just Darien. The, these vaccination sites are open across the state.
Thank you.
And then just the last part of my question, Alan, on the, on the substitute and filling gaps, do, do you need more resources?
So the board, I want to express our appreciation to the board from our staff in general and certainly from central services too, but particularly to the teachers on the ground. The board has been very responsive to come back and tell us what you need, and we have done that, and we have asked for resources and the town through the board has supplied those. And at this point, there just comes a point where, where even if you had a lot of people, it just gets too disruptive with the type of people, and I don't mean type in terms of people, I do mean type of thing, but, but experience and so on and so forth, and I can just, there just comes a point, how do you know what that point is? Well, you know it when you see it and you know it when you feel it. And at this point, I would say that there certainly are personnel-wise, people-wise, I don't think we are looking for, it's hard to get substitute teachers, yes. But the last time we were sitting at the table, we did get some people, but they, you know, some people come and some people go and drift in and out. I would come back to the table here, you've invited me to come back many, many times and I'm not going to be shy of coming back and asking for resources, so at this point, no.
Further board questions?
Can I jump in just one second? I just want to clarify, when we say teachers for the vaccine, we're talking about paraprofessionals and administrators too. It's not just classroom or in front of student teachers, it's, it's our personnel who work closely with students on all, in all levels, just to clarify.
So is it, is it simple to say it's the whole staff that includes facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and there is kind of a priority list, you know, the kid, the, the staff members who work directly with students on a one-to-one or, you know, closer to, two, three-to-one basis who need, you know, additional services, they're prioritized, but we, we will be, you know, submitting as many names as possible to get as many people vaccinated as possible.
Good.
Mrs. McCam. Thank you. I have two questions. My first is, you know, I think we don't know very much about the, the new potential strain, but I was just curious if, to address the matter, is there anything that we need to be doing or that you are doing in terms of preparing for that? Are we just in a wait-and-see mode? My first question. And my second is, we received a number of questions about special education and children in special education, being able to access their services, planning for the remote environment and children who cannot access their services in their remote environment. If Charlie could take a minute to address some of the questions that we've received and some of what I've just asked, please, for you.
Jill, can you repeat your first question, right?
Yeah, just whether, I think it's early, but just whether or not there is anything that, that we know enough to begin planning for any concerns about the new strain of the virus or the potentially new strain.
So that, that question, that, that, that issue, we would be looking at that, just monitoring very, very closely with the team on a, on a regular daily basis. I certainly don't want to overextend. You could say, why, why did it never be coming back? Well, again, we don't want to, based on our best information, make a decision that's actually work against us. We also want to, certainly, we'll see how that plays out. We haven't made a big decision about that other than, we know there's, the drive in Connecticut has arrived here in the shore, so we'll see what happens with it. And it's just, that will be a wait, that will definitely just be a wait and see and close collaboration. Support services, the, the shore research you can answer, but I understand that the couple of days before the holiday and the couple of days, these five days were a complete clear out of the school, right? Which meant inclusive of our, our students, leaving special services or support services. That was intentional because we felt it was important to take that opportunity and with the worry that we had, it was even a worry to have people in school at all. And I'm sorry about that. These children are the, the children that need schooling the most. I know that, my staff knows that, you know that, and being in school is particularly important. It's kind of like, we kind of went into a, a remote, a, a remote phase that we didn't have defined, so to speak, right? A little bit in the sense of where, where those children would be out. But as our intent, we are in a remote phase to service those particular constituents of students moving forward. I don't know if Charlie's on there. Charlie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. If I may just add to that, Dr. Adley, and, and to the question, if we were to go remote for a longer period of time, we are having that conversation for our specialized programs, would we be able to consider the safety and health factors and possibly be able to continue to support our students with intensive needs? So that is an ongoing conversation with staff, with related service providers and with the administrative staff pre-K through 12. Does that answer? Jill, was that helpful? Does that answer? Jill, was that helpful?
I'll clarify for, for Ms. McCann. We, our intent is to provide those services for those kids and families.
Thank you.
Mrs. Perrin. Sorry, if you could talk.
Oh, I was on, sorry. I've been on the whole time. Anyways, just saying thank you for the, for the clarification, the greater explanation. Some of the concerns that I've heard, and I think we've all heard about questions about the long weekend coming up, February break, what, is there a plan going forward? These are just questions I'm throwing out, but could we test those that travel before coming in? Is there a way to, you just have a better understanding going forward of when we are off for school for a little bit of time? What, what's the plan going forward?
So the honest answer to that is we haven't developed that plan. All right. We will be, again, in close consultation with our colleagues here, looking at that time period. So that's the only way I can leave that right there at the moment.
Mrs. McCann.
Some of the questions that we received as board members are in our email or what have you, I think have a lot to do with, with people just looking for a productive way to be part of the conversation. That is extremely difficult at this time. I know you're making cross, you know, split second decisions all the time and we're, we've changed teaching so rapidly. But has there any, been any thought into any sort of, what does feedback look like to you? How, how are you envisioning talking with parents regularly? I mean, I know, I know there's the staff to, to family connection, but are you looking at any sort of formal way to, to see where, take the temperature of parents in terms of what's going well? Or not?
So I, I would say that we, we have been inclusive of parents and provided opportunities and forums along the way to participate. And I work very closely with our, our CDSP and other organizations to understand how people are feeling or otherwise. And since the last sort of forums, we've been responding to what we're seeing on the ground at the moment. So perhaps we haven't had a forum in the recent time. I would have to think about what that actually would look like. That would be productive and helpful. But we did say along the way that we would continue to look for feedback. So that's, that's a fair, I'll take that as a fair point to think about in terms of what that might look like. But we, we have had opportunities for people to share their perspectives. But maybe we revisit that again in a different, different way, perhaps.
Thank you. Mrs. Ackman.
So I think Mrs. McCann brings up a good point, but I will also say, I urge, and I see a lot of parents listening to this call, I urge and reinforce the superintendent's message that the best place to get information is the district. I think I saw a lot of information in kind of my social media feed search. Some of it really good questions and parents who really had concerns. Some of it misinformation with people answering concerns that either isn't their expertise or is their understanding, but maybe as board members, we felt differently and we don't respond on social media. So I just would say, if there is a question and, and all questions are valid, please go to the chair of the board who will send it to board members, the superintendent or the district, because I think in some ways we unintentionally spread anxieties in, in an effort to help. And, and I watched some conversations go, go what I might argue would be far afield with incorrect information. And I, and I just think that that kind of spreads anxiety and there's enough anxiety at this moment. So I would just urge, I think any board member here wants to be responsive. We will all forward our, your questions immediately to the chair. The chair sends them all out to us and/or contact your principal or the superintendent, because I think that's, at least I felt as a board member, often I was answering phone calls for, or forwarding emails to the chair that were either misunderstandings or misinformation. And, and I don't, I want everyone to have correct information. So that would be my plea to the public. Please, please use your chains of communication. Please come to us if you have questions. We certainly can tell you who to talk to or, or put you in that chain of communication. But I think that's the best way to get accurate answers to questions, even with well-meaning people trying to be helpful.
Any other further board questions or comments? I think, yes, Mrs. Ritchie.
I don't know if this is the right time, but I really, I just wanted to touch on, you mentioned MMS, middle school and high school back to hybrid. And then you mentioned that if the metrics stay the way they are, or if they get better, that we could possibly see them going in person. Do we have any thoughts about what that would need to look like? Because it's great that K through five is coming back in person, but I think our middle school kids need to be back in person at some point soon. And I'm sure our high school kids would like to be back too.
Well, I would like, I would like to welcome them back. In fact, I want to make sure that I take the opportunity when we've just announced they are coming back. If there's any young people watching here, I don't know why they would, but if they are watching, we are delighted that they welcome you back. Your teachers are, are looking forward to seeing you. I only, honestly, I only said that as an example of one of the metrics that might contribute to the decision to come back. If those metrics were to fall or decrease rather, that would be encouraging. But I'm not going to overcommit. I know people have talked to me about other districts and so on. Some of the plans for other districts that you might hear are going in place, may not be in place. In fact, they might be closing all the others in different places. Again, we're making decisions with the health and safety of our children in this particular community. And if we can get our kids back to school, we will. But I'm not going to, I'm not just going to do that. I'm not going to commit to one particular metric there. There have to be other signs. We certainly have to have staff who feel well. We certainly have to have metrics that would indicate that way and conditions in place. And these people on on Zoom here, our medical person are going to help me.
Follow up on that. You probably can't opine on this, but just do you think, is it your instinct that the vaccine, once it starts to roll out to our teachers and our staff, that that potentially can be something that helps resume in-person school?
I have no idea. The same way as I, we asked everybody not to go places, not to travel, not to gather, right? And to those people who did, thank you. I, I very much appreciate that. But where the gatherings took place and traveling and so forth, it all depends on, as a community, how we respond at night. I guess we are where we are because we have responded well to in some capacity. That we're not completely through the roof with these numbers. And when you look at it across the per field type of metrics too, so I, I just can't imagine those things to answer to.
Mrs. McCann.
Speaking of travel, one of the questions I received from a number of, of community members is whether or not this period of time remote meant that we would have to go remote after MLK or after February? Because of the travel, potential for travel.
Certainly, again, I could refer to my medical, but I would say not necessarily. I don't know if Tim or David wants to kick in with that or otherwise.
Yeah, this is David. I, the issue over the holidays was the family gatherings and it wasn't so much travel. It was just a lot of people getting together for extended periods of time. We have a weekend for people to travel and do things. They could still pretty much isolate. And I'm, I frankly am not quite as worried about a short weekend or a little long weekend as much as I am for an extended gathering time for families, which is what happened during the holidays. Our weekly data does support the concerns that we had over that. And, and I don't see, Martin, the upcoming long weekend as being as much of an issue. Thank you.
Mrs. Ackman.
So again, I do feel like we started to see a little bit of neighbor v. neighbor and judging what people are doing. I, I think our only plea as a school district really can and should be to please follow the rules and the law set out by the state. And if you are doing that and you are in compliance, it does not help us to pit neighbor versus neighbor. Like, we're supposed to be fighting a virus, not each other. I, I think, you know, David said it well. It's a matter of if, if large groups are getting together and that's what we're asking people not to do, that's fine. There are certain people who traveled and followed the rules and that's okay. I don't think we can start demonizing one another. So my plea, I think the plea I would ask the board to, if we ever decide to make a statement on this, please follow the rules set out by the CDC, set out by our state government. That's what we have to follow at this point. If at any point the federal government makes rules. But let's not turn on each other. Like, again, I don't think we need to be hounding each other's social media making judgments. I, I think that complicates matters for us at this table significantly, and it does not help.
Any other further board questions or comments? I think just a quick recap and I put together some thoughts after spending a lot of time on emails, phone calls, texts with parents, students, definitely board members in the administration. But I think I want to start out by thanking everyone that's taken the time to email, call the administration and the board with your comments, your concerns and your ideas. Though there is no playbook for running a school during a worldwide pandemic, and we're all frustrated how this unique situation has affected our kids. We're a fortunate community to be comprised of so many smart, thoughtful and caring people. We're working hand in hand with our town health officials to protect our students, teachers, administrators, staff and all of our Darien families. Our whole community as a whole in creating a safe environment necessary to educate our children, especially if we are going to try and do in-person school. Our goal has always been and remains to have all of our children in school each day. Adhering to the safety protocols, social distancing and travel will continue to help reach that goal. Your concerns over remote learning or hybrid learning are understandable, and I assure you, we hear them and share some, and we share them. We're fortunate to have one of the most well-respected superintendents in the state and administrative staff, second to none, and a dedicated, passionate group of teachers and of teachers who are committed to our students and want to see our students in the schools each day. I'm sure you know they're not thrilled with remote learning either, and they want to see and educate our students. But they understand, as you do, that there's no easy solution to these complicated problems. They also understand that information and guidance in regard to COVID-19 changes rapidly. And then as Dr. Allen has said, the admin, Dr. Adley has said, the administration is tasked with making these decisions with up to the minute information. With all that said, I want to reiterate that all of us hear your concerns. And reaching out directly to your principals, assistant principals, teachers, support staff, and of course, those of us on the board remains the best way to communicate with the district. So we know your issues and challenges and can work with you to address them, especially if they are specific to your children. The respectful professional dialogue most of us has, have had since the pandemic began, has been challenged this week, I think, by social media. Rumors, misinformation, speculation and general commentary, including demands, become incredibly misleading and have taken over. This accomplishes nothing but adds to the fear and anxiety of our students that they are already shouldering. While none of us would want our children to see some of the information spilling into social media sites, let's not fool ourselves. They're seeing it. In some cases, sharing it, and in doing so, may feel, may, being made to feel insecure about the decisions being made to keep them safe. This does not discount the many reasonable parents expressing, expressing different opinions. We welcome productive debates, ideas and suggestions. But looking to attach blame in difficult times is counterproductive, and we're better than that. Darien is an educated, professional, passionate community. Let's continue to work with each other with respect and seriousness. We're all feeling the strain of the last several months, and our mutual respect and thoughtfulness have seen us through. If you have individual concerns about your children, please take them up with your school's team. Those professionals can help provide the answers. Excuse me. The board is dedicated to keep moving forward together in what continues to be challenging times. We have a tremendously talented and committed education team in place, dedicated volunteer board of education, made up of your neighbors and friends. Parents here too. Let us commit to respectful dialogue, focused on our children, provide them the love and support they need as we navigate uncharted, challenging times. I appreciate you listening. Thanks for the emails, concerns and ideas. We'll continue to get through this as a community. Duke, Dr. Adley, did you say you had some comments on the hours and the days?
Yeah, just, if, if that's a term you might not just quickly talk about these other, other, other village. The vaccination, you could have went to seven, seven days versus 10 days and Alicia's here, but I think we can cut the chase and say, it was, it was the best and easiest solution and the one with the less ambiguity and less sort of confusion or hard to monitor and so on, so forth. Unless you want to get into the details of that with Alicia, that was the reason to go with the 10. It was, it was much, much cleaner to oversee.
For the quarantine.
Right, yes. Yep. Vaccinations, we've spoken to 180 days and 900 hours. So we do have teams of staff working on proposals for these. We can certainly feel comfortable managing the 900, 180 hours for our youngest elementary is very difficult. I'm just sharing that with you. We haven't solved that problem, but we will bring back next week at, at the board with some proposal as to how we are. I will say, I'll just reiterate again, people can be doing remote non-in-person stuff. Like plethora of it, but not, not well, as opposed to what you're doing in, in school. But that being said, I cannot in any way encourage the board to pass over what is a statutory requirement. So therefore I will bring some back with that. And that will be some probably difficult choices to make. But at the next week's regular board meeting, we'll speak further about that. Teams are actually working on that right now. Food service and transportation, that sort of rolled into the COVID. I'll just speak to that real quickly. With our food service, with the, with remote experiences and what we're, you know, basically there's a loss there. And so you'll see that, that deficit being on over $200,000. That's going to come back to the board, the finance subcommittee. So this is just a, a wee precursor. We will offset that. We have designated an offset of that of transfers. So it really is the same amount after the COVID expenses per se, once, once that, for the most part, once that expenses sort of would make the transfers to offset it. So it's sort of a wise sort of thing, but it is a change. Transportation, Richard's worked with the transportation company to make sure that we will receive credit for, or at least not, not as much of an expense for the days that we're actually not at school to receive. For those days to be offset against the budget. So that, that's helpful. Those are the main, the main updates.
Dr. Adley, are we still at 900 hours? Are we now at 85?
Oh, yes, we are at 85.
I, I know it's a small difference, but as we, as we look and count, our goal posts.
For us, yes.
Our minimum goal post is 85.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Mr. Brown?
Just as we're looking at the numbers, Alicia, on the, I think it was 11:45, current number from the earlier slide, for people who've taken up contact tracing, do you have any idea how many of those have been completed?
Could you just say that again, Dave? You kind of baited out there.
Sorry about that. I know my tone wrong. In terms of the number of people who showed up, I think it was 11:45 in the right-hand column of the slide earlier, who might have taken out for contact tracing, it was a cumulative number. Do we know how many of those have wound up being positive?
How many winded up being positive?
Right, yes. Same, same question I keep asking, Alicia.
You know what? I really, I think maybe two.
Okay.
Not many. So that's kind of a stretch.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Because I've seen this question a lot. If someone's quarantining and positive, they may upload to the state, but they may not report to the school, correct? So would we have an accurate figure on that? They're, they're not required to report to the schools necessarily during their quarantine. I know more, more than two people. So I'm just saying your data and my anecdotal data don't match. And I assume that's because during quarantine, you don't have to report to the school. You just have to report to the state.
You know what? I think maybe the difference is, and maybe we, I mean, need to clarify. When we're talking about kids that we have quarantined in our school setting that haven't turned positive or have turned positive, we maybe have had two. However, that total quarantine number includes all of the social, family and, you know, other people that are, that are students in our school or, or maybe it's a teacher and, and, you know, if they have students, they live in Darien and they have students in the school. So in a family setting or in a social setting, we've had more people turn positive, but not because of sitting next to somebody in a classroom, but because they were, you know, I would say over the past I would say over the past week, the numbers of cases that we've had at the high school, I think we're at about 16 or 17. Those are all social cases, and a lot of those kids that were informed that somebody they were around tested positive have all tests have tested positive. So, sorry, just to clarify, socially, there's been more, and I don't have that exact number. I probably could go back and figure that out. But but as far as in-classroom teachers that we've quarantined or students that we've quarantined because they've come in contact with somebody in their classroom that's positive, we I we really haven't seen anybody test positive from that. So I guess that's where we get that idea of the mitigating strategies of mask wearing and the distancing that we're trying to do and things like that are seeming to make a difference. Does that help clarify?
Thank you. Good, Dave. Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I think Dave and I are talking to you. Go ahead.
I actually might have a follow-up for Dr. Knopf and Tim in a moment, but like, I want to stay on the topic.
I guess my point, I've heard this a lot, and I think what everyone's trying to get to is is quarantining valuable and is it quarantining at the valuable at the scale in which we're doing it? And what I'm saying is if you've been quarantined for 14 days and you become positive those 14 days and you're already home, your positive test is going to go to the state and come into our overall numbers. It may not necessarily go to the school nurse so that they say, oh, yes, I have another child who's positive. Hence, our quarantining numbers say, oh, yeah, we we have someone else that that pulled positive. So I think it's a tricky number to get a handle on. I think it's a valuable number to get handle of as much as we can, but there are going to be positives in there that we may not catch.
Well, can we clarify that with the experts versus Alicia? Is that the actual case of what's going on?
We we follow up with our families that have students in quarantine, and we do ask them to share that information. Also, that information about positive tests is shared with with me from the health department. And so we are continually updating. So we have had cases that we've reported in our num- in our total number of cases or that are listed on the current case level that is as a result of somebody, a family member or social exposure to somebody testing positive in quarantine. So, you know, maybe I don't have 100% of those numbers, but we do. We do send a lot of communications to people who are in quarantine, asking them when they're getting ready to come off quarantine. If you've tested and tested positive, please share that with us, because it does change their dates for staying out of school. So if you test positive on day five of a 10-day quarantine, you then have to then extend your isolation period for another five days to be in isolation for a full 10. So you might be out for two weeks.
I just want to clarify. So if someone's out on a quarantine and they test positive, they need to contact you.
We ask them to.
We ask them to, and and the nurses do try to kind of keep up with that. I think there's probably, we haven't probably captured 100%, but I think we've probably captured a lot of them.
Yeah, and and I'd like to add to that to say that anytime anybody gets tested, those reports come to the health department and we communicate with Alicia multiple times a day on many days to make sure that we're on the same page with all these reports. So there's there's a great deal of communication that's going on back and forth. And all positive tests are reportable to the state, and we have access to that database. So we should know at some point, maybe a day or two or three after the test. But we we do know who's positive, and we do communicate every day with Alicia and the nurses so that we're communicating with the schools.
Mrs. Parent?
Thank you. I just wanted to also clarify a point that I've had to clarify a bunch of times this week to to people that have contacted me, that the Darian Public Schools are not the ones studying the quarantine guidelines and who is quarantined and who is not. That is coming from the state and the medical advisors.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. And I think we've gotten a lot of, you know, there's some misunderstanding around that from what I've heard, so.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
So I just now had a quick follow-up to something that Dave just said, and then just a other question. So real quickly, the reason I was asking about how many people are contact tracing wind up not testing positive is I'm just trying to understand the number of parents, you know, obviously, and teachers. Everyone's worried it's spreading in schools. Seems like, you know, either through luck or through process or through accommodation, it doesn't sound like a lot of people are catching this in schools. That's why I keep going back to the question. The other issue I wanted to ask is earlier, when you were discussing the decision process around the holiday, the difference between a couple of days versus a family gathering. Can you give any sort of color or, you know, a little bit more as to how that decision process works? Just for really looking forward to sort of level-setting. We can have an idea of expectations, you know, if it's a certain holiday where people gather, there's a perhaps greater likelihood we may proactively decide to close versus if it's a holiday where people don't really socialize, like, is that a criteria you look at? Or could you tell us a little bit about the perspective process? Things you look at, you know, to make a decision moving forward as opposed to the numbers we see historically to make decisions?
I I can jump in if if you'd like. I just want to make a quick comment about the the cases in quarantine. Keep in mind, many may be unreported because children are often minimally or asymptomatic with COVID, so they might not have been tested. So we don't really know the actual number of cases. We only know the number who were tested and tested positive. As for the thinking around the holiday, Christmas and New Year's had two very practical issues, which was that the holidays required made a short week. And so testing facilities and reporting were significantly delayed because of the holidays happening over the weekend. And we were facing rising, in fact, record number of of cases in town and in Fairfield County. So that was that entered into the thinking that even the results that we did have or the data we did have to look at might not be timely, and there might be a significant delay in getting reports. And in fact, in the week that that this this past week, there were a number of positives that came in that would have required probable quarantining. So in retrospect, it seemed like a wise decision, at least to preserve as much hybrid or in-person learning as possible. As as for future holidays, a lot of it depends on the case rates in the community, the status of the healthcare systems in surrounding our community and the trends that we're seeing in in the data. So it's short, you know, an extra day off. And travel is not as important as as social gatherings. If you look at the statewide data in Connecticut, which is interesting, there actually were more cases in December in remote learners than in in-person or hybrid learners. So the conclusion is with the quarantine systems we have in place, they are effective in keeping kids safe. I know it's frustrating for families to have kids out. We have recently reduced the quarantine period, which would be less of a burden to staff and to families. There was also a question about vaccination. We don't know yet, but it should lower the risk to the staff significantly, but it will not at in the short term result in any changes in our mitigation strategies, because we still don't know whether vaccinated people can transmit the the disease. We'll have more data as time goes on. I would say the single most important determinant of what what decisions are made is actually the behavior of people in the community. So if if school is important, I would, you know, echo some of the other board members, say, be mindful of your activities, because every little risk you take adds up over time. And if school's important, I urge everyone to be mindful. I know everybody's tired. I'm certainly tired of this pandemic. But the case rates are very high. They're higher than they've ever been in in a crowded social gathering. There's a good chance there's someone who's positive there. So be very mindful, especially over the next few weeks, of activities. And with that preaching, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Mrs. Ritchie?
Just a follow-up on the contact tracing. Since we're not seeing, I haven't heard this, but since we're not seeing the spread in the schools, has there been any thought or discussion to a change to who would be captured in that quarantine based on contact tracing? Or is it just going to stay the way it is? I haven't heard any changes or disparities with the medical professionals.
There there's been no recommendations for any changes to the current quarantining. I think those are public health protocols, and we're just, you know, we're until the State Department of Education and Department of Health decide that they think that should change, I think we will continue to adhere to those protocols for the safety of everyone.
Mr. Maroni?
Yes, I think one of the points you just brought is is that the fact that remote learners have higher cases than students who are in school. So the question for me is, is that a case of that more schools are doing remote? So therefore, there's a higher percentage? Or that the James' point that the mitigation strategies are working in school, we should probably have more kids in school than doing hybrid or remote? It's a question. It's not. It's a question, not a statement. So I'm just unsure as to, you know, is it is when kids are remote and hybrid, are they going out and interacting with more and more children and other people? And it's defeating the purpose of being remote, because the thought is if you're remote, you're not going to interact.
I don't know the regular schools, but I'll ask if one of our officials wants to answer that.
I I would say, I think I've said here before, as I get older, I find the answer to every either-or question is yes. I'd say, well, we really don't know. We just, it's just an observation. What it does argue, though, is that being in school is reasonably safe and that the mitigation strategies are working. I wouldn't necessarily jump to say that remote is is less safe, because it's just gross data from the state of Connecticut, and many districts have gone on remote. And so we don't know really what what the sources are. But it does argue, again, that most cases that we're seeing are from community activities. And that's really the place to, and of course, the the board and the faculty and have very little control over what happens in in the community. But I'd urge the community to to be careful. School's a safe place. And to be just as safe as at home would be very prudent.
It was also the Connecticut State Department of Public Health recommendation this week. So you're balancing all of these things to reduce density where you can. So it's like.
Any other further questions or board comments around this? Well, thank you all for contributing to that conversation. Much appreciated.
Mr. Knopf, I don't know where you are, but that's the clearest you have been on any conference call that I've ever had with you, so.
Well, I'm glad, finally.
May I?
Thank you.
May I ask at the board chair's pleasure, could Alicia give the board the update on tonight's COVID so she can send out to the public?
Sure.
We're here.
Oh. Now you're asking me to be more prepared.
You're always our.
Alicia, if you could just speak up a little bit too. Thank you.
Okay, we have today reported 11 new cases. There are five at the high school. I'm just going to pull this up. I'm sorry. I don't know it off the top of my head. Five at the high school, two at the middle school, two at Holmes and one at Royal. I'm sorry, three at Holmes and one at Royal. So that makes 11.
Do we know if there's any quarantining involved with that?
Family court, family quarantine, I think several of these high school cases are the result of being exposed over New Year's and the we and that subsequent weekend. And so people that we knew were in quarantine and awaiting tests and symptomatic.
Any further questions or comments around that? Thank you very much, Alicia.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Dr. Canafak David. Alicia, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Moving on to the next agenda item, presentation of superintendent's proposed budget for the 2021, 2022 school year. So real quick, thank you, Dr. Adley. Your administrative team and all the administrators in the local schools for working on developing the budget that will continue to provide incredible education for our students, continue to invest in our students and our education and doing that all while working, I think, seven by 24 on COVID responses and contact tracing and trying to keep our children in school. So thank you very much for that. But with that, the goal is to continue to invest in the incredible education that we deliver to our students, continue to look for efficiencies and to continue to develop the right programs and services for our students. So with that, I'll turn it over to.
Thank you. Just as we transition from. Yeah, give you a minute. Okay, we can do that. Always good when it's words. We want additional technology assistance in the budget, just for the record.
So Michelle's doing a great job.
Yes, yes, she is. Yes, she is. She's going to be here all day Saturday. Thank you for the clarification to the doctor. So good evening. It's always a pleasure and a wonderful opportunity to celebrate what we do in the district and to look ahead to the next year. And it's just nice to transition into that mode and to share some of the exciting things that we have before. We have some challenges before us, but nothing that we cannot work through. I say just as a chairman, before we started, just pay recognition to the excellent work of Mr. Ruhl, as finance director and his staff, the efforts of the cabinet, Marge, Christopher, Shirley, and also recognize Mr. Lynch, Mr. Adams, for all of their work. The principals at the school level on top of doing everything else, trying to put a thoughtful, a comprehensive process together to our RC department chairs and to every member of the departments and the staff, because they are all part of those that that decision-making process. So for everybody's efforts and including outside my own assistant, the Dean, the Seale, your work is very much appreciated from itself and also from the board. Thank you.
If the music's not therapeutic, everybody needs a little Fred Rogers in their life right now. But actually, his quotation here is actually very pertinent to the responsibilities that we have. This district supports education, has done through annual budgets, and it's clear to see through the staff and through the resources that we provide. And I think that's one of the responsibilities that we have. Our children may go through the system, and we certainly support school system. We have community members, obviously, who children may have gone through or may not have gone through, and they're asked to support this budget. I think that's one of the challenges and wonderful opportunities that we have to provide for the next generation. And so with all of those sort of sentiments working hand in hand together, it sort of captures the year a little bit. And so with all of those sort of sentiments working hand in hand together, it sort of captures the year a little bit. In my mind, anyway, and also frames what we're actually trying to do moving forward as we prepare to prepare all our kids. We're not going to miss generations or years of kids because of COVID. And we're going to do the best we can for all our kids moving forward. So with that, thanks, Fred, for framing the discussion for me.
Alan, can you just get a little closer, Mike?
Thank you, thank you, John. I'll just, I'll just get real close to this thing. If it gets disruptive that I'm touching it too much, somebody let me know. Board of Education goals always frame the budget, but remember, like, the Board of Education goals this year are for this year. This budget is for next year, but some of them, I mean, as we, some of them roll over. And also, even though it's not adopted yet, I will say that I'm continuing to work with the premises of the big ideas that are on the table right now for strategic planning. And so with that sort of context and background and also the context, the greater context of the state, the nation, the challenges that we have that that frames the look ahead to next to next year. So a little bit of information, just a background knowledge. Tonight, I just want to give you a sense. I think everybody, I'm looking around the table here, and I think everybody knows how to navigate the books, so I'm not going to get into that. But it gives you the opportunity to frame the issues and then on Saturday to delve into them and more greater detail with further staff members. But I'll share just nine-year average. Clearly, when you look at that, you know, last year was a different year. Well, I know, but we weren't in school for a good chunk of the year. The other thing is, I would say that just in general, you're spending 99.7 on average of the budget. So in any given year, there are different things that take place regarding pluses and minuses and so on and so forth. But I think if you're spending 99.7 of the budget over the years, that that's, that was still good fiscal management and also good fiscal usage of the funds. That's just another perspective versus where are these projections coming from? These are the five-year projections that we, you know, we did like a couple of weeks ago, or it seems, maybe it was a month or so ago, but they're done every year. I will say that they're trying to really develop over time, like five-year plans. So you'll see some things that we discussed maybe last year, maybe in this, or maybe discussed as a initiative this year that you'll see next year. Obviously, FY22, we come in with 4.54, and 4.54 was what I came in with, like, just over a month ago with the five-year rollout. And we'll see what that is, but the superintendent's version of that has come in today at 3.99. So those just give you a sense of what the projections were for versus what actually board-approved, adopted budgets actually took place, and we'll see what transpires this year, but before you, it's a 3.99 budget. This gives you a little bit of an idea of just a comparison again, so that's just useful to see the return on investment for our funds and for our taxpayers. So what does this show you? For instance, it it shows you that that we are lower than the average PPA of the dirt. And if you were in Westport with our enrollment and their PPA, you would have to raise an additional $4 million for taxpayers. Similarly, if you're a new candidate, you'd have to raise, or you would be have not to pay as much, give it a $1.5 million less. But you can see that we're well placed there, and again, we are lower than the average on the PPA. So essentially, those black numbers, you would have to other numbers, you would have to raise additional taxes for those funds. It's always like a wonderful opportunity to, and a budget opportunity time period, just to celebrate a little bit, and we certainly do celebrate this year. There's a number of things that we we have celebrated. And should take time out for. It's been an interesting year. Let's be realistic, since last budget, last budget, just, you know. We're in the same sort of condition in March, and we've been in this state ever since. And there's lots of things to be thankful for and to recognize. They include the ten-year hard work of our students and our staff. And a commitment to the mitigation strategy. To a high caliber level of remote learning right out the door in March. And I know that there's much discussion about that back and forth, but they have done a tremendous job, our staff, and you you should be very proud of them in that regard, and of our kids. Our kids just hit the platform room and continue to do so. I've always believed, no matter what the situation, as kids rise to the challenges that you present to them, and if you model the behavior, they will step to the challenges. We have continued to have a number of, the arts have continued to blossom even in this, even in this forum, and it's commendable to the children who are doing the drama and the music programs that have taken place. It's exciting to see Axe Ridge come to fruition. I have some pictures for the board to to send to them, like at the grindbake and up there that is underway at the moment, and that's just exciting. We continue to be recognized that this, under 2020, their best high school in the state of Connecticut. Newsweek just over a year ago did the best high school for STEM. Our young people still continue to perform in athletics and extracurricular areas. I think our cross country were the last ones to, I think they're in the Western Division of it, if I have the information, remember. The way they structured these things, but all our our sports teams had different levels of success. And our recent SAT and AP scores were outstanding for our children. And there's been a focus on social emotional learning, and that's that's where it is most appropriate and the needs are at this particular time. And our physical continue to experience much success, and those are just wonderful programs to get the kids engaged in. So there's still a lot to be very thankful for, and a lot to recognize around the district, a few of the, a few of the things. This just shows you again a chart that is the 2020 per pupil expenditure for every state, every school district across the state, and it also shows you the 2020 SAT score for the class of 2020. It shows you the last score that they they did. It's not necessarily the best score, it's the last score, because that's the only feedback that we get in terms of every, every community. But you can see there that essentially the top right-hand quadrant. No one's, no one gets a higher score, but spending less money in terms of your return on investment. So I think that, no, that's a compliment that we're right there. Well, we're more than right there, right? It's just a point in time, but all the other indicators suggest the same, but this is one that also, it's the end product that we're producing, we're most concerned about right now. You want, as we finish, to finish well, and that's just a in any given year, you can say something different, but it's pleasing to see that that's, that's a good return on investment, Snapchat for the district and for the community. Enrollment enrollment is going to increase by 20 students, but you'll see you go over basically a 10-year period, it's going to stay at that, it's going to be at the 4,600 kids basically next year, and 30, 31 is going to be at 4,600 kids, too. So we're up 20%, and, or sorry, 20 students, but it's going to then just stay relatively very steady. And this is the class sizes. We've been able to maintain class sizes, good class sizes. The average class size is just, just under 20 or just at 20. So you'll see that we actually have, we increased here a section fifth grade at Himley. A section at kindergarten homes, at Axe Ridge, third and fifth grade, and we reduced the fifth grade section at Royal. So if you remember last year, that there was 106 sections, we reduced that to 103, and there's now net brings it back up to 106 sections. There is two sections that were increased in at the high school for enrollment, it doesn't do it in the elementary, but the two sections at the high school. The budget essentially is 3.99. We did every, everything we could to keep the budget, we looked for as best as possible. This just states the obvious that the 77% of our funding is all is is tied up in employment, personnel benefits, but we are, we are employment-based person-based organization that should not be surprising to anyone in that capacity. I won't go through all of these in terms of what they are, but they they basically represent the contractual responsibilities that we have to address through different, these different salaries. And but you see that it's $1.92 million. So it's basically near 2% on on salary. We'll talk a little bit about these moving forward, but these are contractual obligations that we have. We certainly have staff turnover, we plan for about 22 teachers. That's probably as high as we have done before. But we feel confident that that we can put that number in there. Budget control is before, which it has been in the past, but I'm just noting it right there. And staff reductions, you see with it, we have had to make staff reductions in here. So anything that we have anything that's added this year's budget, there've been some difficult decisions we made to offset some of those to try and be reasonable about the number, but also continue to incrementally move forward here. So I'll look at, I'll give you the next page, sort of talk a wee bit about some of these staff positions, the increases, the decreases. So I'll give you a wee talking points tonight, and you'll be able to, you know, on Saturday, be able to get all the details, but let's just sort of talk a bit a little bit. At the high school. So DHS team teaching enrollment and enrollment. So there's an increase at the high school of 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 students, and there's two positions there that are put in the budget for increase in enrollment, that's point six in English, point six in language arts, and point eight math, or point eight, sorry, point six. Point six in English, point six in languages, and point eight mathematics. Some of you have a greater background on the team than I do, but we've been looking at that sort of organized, there's a I'll just say, there is a tremendous amount of support at the high school. That's not a bad thing, but it certainly, if you're a fraternity around the district, you're significant supports. I mean, just significant supports, many supports that are not common in high school. That doesn't mean to say it's a bad thing. Because you always, you want to be doing the right things for children, but there are some some programs that you can continue to look at. One of them is actually the team teaching. They have opportunities for co-teaching, there's opportunities for labs. So this is, the program hasn't gone away per se, because we're going to still keep that format in the sciences. Because there isn't that support service in the sciences, but in in the other areas of language arts, mathematics, social studies, that we're making some reductions. So there's the, there's 1.6 decreases and 2.6 increases. The 2.6 is two for enrollment. And point six for increase in STEM classes at the high school, and you'll see a little bit about that. There's a couple of courses that are going to be added in for design, introduction to apps, innovation courses. So the two, two, two positions for enrollment and point six for increase in STEM. So middle school library, we were reducing one of the, one of the librarians at the middle school. So all this sort of like is to sort of offset and to come to a final budget number. Elementary class sizes, or you can see sort of the net three increase that I talked about earlier. Test facilitators, I'm going to swing back to this, but the test facilitator is removing, eliminating the positions at the elementary school. And there's one in each elementary school, and then the introduction back again of, I'll call them the SASS assistant principals. Have you noticed the, oh, sorry. If you notice the bold numbers, because when you get down to the blue, you have to look at, you have to sort of like add the bold numbers together. So the DHS, the library, the library librarian professional, that will go from two to one. And the one will go to the middle school because there isn't one there, and that will help the person, will help the one media specialist who remains at the middle school. Elementary instructional part professional and lunch monitor. So when you look at the right-hand side, it says minus 5.5. It's reducing one instructional part professional at each of the schools. It reduces one that we added at Ox Ridge, and then it adds back a point five part of professional for enrollment, and that that gets you to the minus 5, 5.5. The 4.62 is the addition of sort of like 10 people, but very part-time people. So this was a tough decision to make. A trade-off, what we feel is at least, I would say, a creative trade-off to make supervision and for things to work, to work comfortably. Technology and copy center, so we will be eliminating one of the part professional positions at the copy center, and we will be adding in technician for technology. If you remember, we added some in this particular year, so we're keeping one of those positions in. You may recall that we got, we're not thinking of two positions. We would like two positions, we think we'll need two positions eventually, right? But for now, we're, we have one in the budget. The teacher and residence program is the program that will allow a minority candidate, and it's encouraged throughout the state to promote the diversity and racial minority recruitment, and we've been trying to do that. Marge has been doing a good job over the years, that's kind of actually do that, and it's very hard. This is one opportunity we have with working with faculty, yes, to bring a teacher to Darianna, minority candidate, who would be mentored by a master teacher here. And then at the end of the year, that we take a course, a time of penalty of a job position that we would, we would appoint them to that particular position. We have an educational part professional here and transportation drivers. So there's minus two special education part professionals being reduced from programming. That's IEP-driven, and then we are increasing, we're increasing a part of the driver, actually. And we're purchasing a new suburban to try and offset some costs, and that will offset about $100,000 or so in savings in terms of time to do a part professional, get the, get the vehicle, and then reduce other expenses. We have a nurse that will fall under special education for needed for cooking at school. So when you, when you add the increases and decreases, that's a net increase of just over two staff members. We've removed all the COVID, certainly national flood out there, but that's nearly 16 positions eliminated. Obviously, we're eliminating all the COVID positions and then putting back our assets for the ones that we want. So overall, it's a net increase of 2.32. It will take a wee bit of time, I'm sure, for you to, what's moving and what's fading off, but with the conversations, I'm sure we'll get there with the explanation. But there are, suffice to say, there are a lot of moving parts. And not everybody's happy about all of it, right? This process of give and take a little bit, but in order, honestly, to move forward, we have to make some decisions, definitely there's some progress, ways with these things. So these are the health rights and health benefits. The health benefit includes the net increase of 2.3, the 7.95, if you remember, we switched the anthem for this year, and there was a cap of 7.95 that was negotiated skillfully from our business department. That the cap, we're, so we're planning on that, it'll be a couple of months before we actually know. But we're primarily are planning on on that, given our our experience rate. But we'll know the final number, but it can't be any higher than 7.95. So again, that is a 1% of the budget right there alone. So just a wee bit of an explanation about the SASS assistant, well, I know we'll get into this further, but just essentially, you make the swap for $146,000, given what the SASS facilitator is currently salaried and what the swap was for, and given what you're going to, given what this can bring to the table. When you look at, I understand that it sounds five assistant principals. Well, you have an average administrator sitting there for about 350 hours. I think it's ours every year that they don't actually need to be there. However, that will not remove principals from certain scenarios because I'm sure they'll still, well, you will want them, I will want them still to be involved. But not anywhere near to the extent of the requirement we have nowadays to have two administrators at the table. It's just, I know there's a time and place for these. I'll also say that the positions, but someone, someone recently asked me, does a new superintendent come in and then just add all the programs he wants? No. And it's not to say that programs that were in place were a bad idea by any other superintendent. That's not the case either, but it's just a fresh set of eyes and a certain time and place something was the best way to do something, right? For the reasons that were before us. But there's just an opportunity with a new set of eyes to say, is that, is that recognized as, is that the best way we should be done it? And could it be, could it be done differently or otherwise? And the answer to that, my opinion is just, and this is supported by your principals and by special service department. I think everybody has an opportunity to benefit from here. Parents, the services for all students and not just, not just special education as students. Deficiency of, of what you get back from the amount of hours and so on and so forth. The SASS facilities don't have the ability to supervise. And there's influence that can be done, a different level of influence. When you have a, when you carry a different position, that's just the reality of it. So we feel for, I know it could be a hard sell, just five administrators. But for 146,000 dollars, you may have this as an opportunity to make a significant improvement. Special education. So the increases in the salary for personnel. The 272,000 is essentially the positions for contracted services. And also buses for ESY. ESY, we didn't do ESY. So we go from revised budgets and now we have to put in the buses back in at about 150,000 or so. So about 150,000, a special education line item of 272 is buses. The access cost, we're going to, we are actually getting less money back because the, the rate, reimbursement rate is dropping to 67.5. We are at about 75 at a particular point that we budgeted, that we have budgeted for this year. But next year, the indication is at 67.5. So that's a 1.1% increase. So when you take that 1.1 and you put it with the health at one point, that there's another, just right away to 2% in the budget. So just some other highlights I had to talk about. It's not everything because you'll see some nice things coming out from our RCs. The class sizes are protected here. We're continuing to promote STEM in the system, up and down the system. These are things that the board's interested in, there's goals. These are things that have come through superintendent entry plan, strategic plan. And so it's a nice way to do that. And we're starting, we're at the moment at this. So in this particular budget, we're supporting it at the high school. And of course, we continue to support objectively the way at the middle school. I'm pleased to share that the administration went to the Darien Foundation. Different meeting, we will discuss a proposal from them to support their robotic program, K to 12, which is an extracurricular pub, over 200,000 dollars over two years. And that's a very gracious and extension and offer. And we'll bring that separately from the budget, but it just gives a wee sense of also just trying to promote STEM offerings for, for, for kids. We are going to continue social emotional learning support and we're going to complement that with the roller approach from Yale. And I know we've been doing our own work. It doesn't, it doesn't do away with that. And we can, we sort of have an explanation about that. How do I want to work with the work that we're currently doing? One-to-one computing, well, it's here. So we're not taking it away. That's for sure. So we're sort of committed to the K to two right now. And also we have been committed to the freshman changing when they get to the high school. So it's really K to two devices. It may not be, there may not be eggheads necessarily. That decision has not been made for our students, but it will be one of those, it will be a tablet of some description, but again, more, more of common that it's through the budget process. Upgrades in network and wireless technology infrastructure that we had to do for currently the COVID situation, that's a carryover. So there are some things that are sort of carryover COVID. One would be the infrastructure and another would be a technology technician. And some other just improvements for technology and software that we have committed to. So for instance, no one's going to like say, does that happen next year? Right? So those things have to carry forward. The opportunity to participate in the open choice program is not delineated here because we're still working with legislators behind the scene to see if that can actually happen. It would be at a revenue of revenues incidental for the most part. It's $3,000 for kindergarten students. It's not built in here, but essentially we would take 15 to 18 kindergarten students at home, archorage and Henley split because, because they can accommodate them. We wouldn't put them in the other schools because too close to tipping the classes. And I would recommend to the board that if this is able to come to fruition, that we would start a kindergarten. I think having the children at the earliest grade level gives them the greatest opportunity to be successful. But with CES and some of our legislators and some of the surrounding superintendents, I'm hopeful that this actually might happen, but it's not really, you know, there's no expense or revenue in the actual budget. But it's, it's, it's an ongoing discussion that hopefully can coincide. The teacher and resident program, I think I just spoke about that a little bit earlier. That's we originally were thinking about two teachers in this program and that would be about $140,000, but we, we similarly to the technician, now we're going to bring to one teacher. So as we, these are the areas to support diversity initiatives. The facility assessment, but I only pull that out because it's a big number. It's around $200,000. As it informs our capital program. It does maintain the added buses already in place. It doesn't accommodate any of the plans moving forward potentially of any decisions that the board may make to any of the options from the other study. With your understanding, I won't read everything in the capital. We've, we've, we've gone through that, but suffice to say there's carpet to be replaced. There's pavement around the districts to be done. There's a roof to be done, Royal Scroll. And some security upgrades with the security cameras and emergency lighting. Those are the main things you can certainly read, read these along with three, every single one. The high level summary of the budget. 3.35 of it, when you frame it, is contractual increases, special education contract, enrollment driven increases. The COVID carryover, those are the things that from software to technology, to the, to, to the technology assistant. These are, this is what's in the COVID carryover. Budget control, I just pulled it out there because it's a big number. Whenever we're trying to make numbers work, it's just, it's, it's certainly a nice thing to have, but we can see how it contributes to the number, the building condition survey again. And without the net changes that we did here and the moving around of things, we would not be able to, to make the improvements that they were actually making, but they actually net out essentially to zero in making those changes. And thusly we're, we're left at with a 3.99. I will say your, your principals have made some tough choices. Principals by nature, and I was too, as, as Christopher was, was very protective of the building. I understand that. But there is also a point where they're making some proactive decisions for the betterment of the, of the community in general. And they've made some, they've made some what they would call trade-offs in terms of trying to realize some efficiencies in order to get some of the things that we want, which would include the SASS facilitator. So that I'm pleased to present to the board on behalf of administration at 3.99 budget this year. We look forward to our RCs on Saturday. I'm happy to answer questions where you want to address them tonight or otherwise. But I'm pleased to bring up before the board for the proposal for review and possible adoption.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. Thank you, Rich, Dean and everyone in all the schools for a well-thought-out presentation overview of what I know many of us have already started working on. And just as an FYI, all the books have been delivered to our partners, the Board of Finance, RTM Education, RTM FNB, CDSP. So a lot of people picked up their books today. So we'll begin our work in earnest on Saturday morning, but I'll open it up for board questions and comments. This is Richie.
I just had heard a rumor that there might be some pages needing to be replaced in our finders. Is that true or no?
So there are two pages.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board questions or comments? Mr. Brown.
All right, thanks. I just had a couple of questions. Just re, looking at this as we're sitting here. The number, Rich, and maybe just be labeling the contractual wages and insurance and benefits. Is that pure contract? Like the contracts just rolled forward? Here's the number or is that inflated? Or is there another way we can just get pure contractually? We have to go up by X.
So it's the collective bargaining agreements that we have for the staff plates.
Right.
Rolled over to the new year for whatever their contractual agreement is. Includes the health insurance increase of that 7.95%. As well as contractual increases.
All right. So that's 7.9. That's contractually, we have to pay whatever that is. It's 7.9 or lower.
So we have a rate cap of 7.95%, but we can't exceed that. If our claims are lower, it is coming lower. Currently our claims are not very good. So we are anticipating.
So it's not two separate things, Rob.
Just point of order. I just want, I don't want to get too far off because this is not our budget discussion. So I think, I think maybe the questions should be more appropriately posed on Saturday. So I don't want to get too far into that because it's not really, we're not really having our budget discussion now.
Yeah, I just got a document when I sat at my seat and I'm trying to understand the context of this meeting. So I probably have one.
Fun to mention that because I don't want to go too far into this discussion. It's not appropriate to have.
I have two more questions in the presentation, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'm understanding it properly.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
The special, the enrollment increases, those are also tied contract, contractually tied in.
So they're teachers for elementary class size. So assuming that we maintain the current elementary class size constraints, those are that plus the reduction like Alan mentioned, the royal fifth grade class. And then it begins to grow the class.
And then one last thing on the SESS assistant principals, we had the one chart. It's the personnel summary, the 2.32 chart. And it's a net change. We have five out and five in, but then we see on the next page, there's a cost difference of 145. So I'm reading this, just to make sure I'm reading this properly. It's 2.32. That's pure FTEs. That's Man hours. But there's no associated costs in the fees are. Okay. So do I know whether this costs me more money or less money?
So on the following, I think it was two tables later.
Bean. Right.
The assistant principal position is about 146,000 dollars more than the current teacher.
Got it. And the other positions on there?
For the.
Cost difference plus or minus for the other positions. It's not in here. That's cool. I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there are pluses and minuses.
Are there in your budget book?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Good. Mrs. Ag.
I would just add a 3.99. Sometimes can be sticker shock. We haven't seen numbers like that in a while, but as you do an analysis over, we were asked to defer over a million dollars of costs. So if you look at our budget that we approved last year prior to the board of finance cut, it's actually only a 2.8% over what our plan was. And so I know we have to look at the actual 3.99, but I think that's a good context for if COVID had not interrupted our plans. We would still be on that trying to keep it in the height, you know, getting around that two, 2.5, anywhere in that range. But, you know, COVID and an immediate need met us. So I just think before I see lots of RTM education and F and B people, which I'm happy to see on this call, but I think some context might be good, but 3.99. We should put in context.
Yeah, very good.
I hope they also, I hope they also say though that we've made some efforts to make offsets and realize efficiencies and another to try and move forward a little bit. Otherwise, we're going to be, in my opinion, going to be very, very stagnant with some of the challenges of, of, of some of the constraints that were, are before us. Yes.
Not a good, good context to think about as we go forward. And I think some lessons learned from COVID as to technology and what we need there to serve this and continue to, to maintain the technology that we've invested in, which has played out well in this COVID environment as we moved in and out of some of these lines. So good. Thank you. With no further questions or comments around that, our work will begin in earnest on Saturday morning. I will move now to public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comments, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name and or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you're unmuted for public comments. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Alicia Melberg, you are unmuted and recognized.
I didn't expect to go first. Thank you, Alicia Melberg, 24 Christie Hill Road. Dr. Adley and the Board of Ed. As we have seen, the past nine months have proven that the administration, teachers, school staff and the community must continue to work in collaboration to keep everyone's best interest in mind. My elementary age daughter's eyes light up every day that has been an in-person day. School has become a happy place as it should be. Thank you, homeschool, our superheroes. In the fall, I publicly spoke of the mental impact remote learning had on our young learner. This concern remains high today. As I talk with more parents, this valid concern is increasing, not only in numbers, but across all age groups. I've reached out numerous times to ask the Board of Ed and the administration to address this. What measures are being taken to ensure that our children's mental health is considered between transitions? The communication on December 31st left many of us to question the transparencies of the administration. The fact that parents are reaching out to others, whether directly or social media for any type of information illustrates there's room for improvement in this area. I recognize that remote learning has made improvements since the spring. I attribute most of the success to fantastic teachers and support staff. The efforts made are noticed. However, with all of these efforts, they cannot offset what is lost from not being in the classroom setting. The negative impacts from the lack of social interaction among peers is something we cannot measure. While some may feel a week here or there of remote is not material, for many young learners like mine, we quickly see negative regressions. I've had conversations with a few of the board members and I welcome all to discuss our experiences and concerns. I still question what avenue is best for parent feedback with the administration. It is vital for you to hear from your end users. Tonight I asked the administration, one, to address the community with the mental health aspects when making transition decisions. Two, to improve communications to be clear and transparent. Three, to create a platform to enable parents and students to leave feedback on remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Melberg.
Elizabeth Drew, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Drew. I live at 14 DuBois Street. I have a kindergartner and second grader at Henley. Happy New Year, Dr. Adley, Duke and the entire Board of Education. Thank you for meeting tonight and inviting public comment. I know this meeting was for budget purposes, but I also feel the need to speak on the school reopening. Duke and Dr. Adley, thank you for recognizing tonight that you hear us concerned parents. That really, really means a lot. I think we definitely need more outlets to share parental feedback. So Sarah, thank you for bringing that up. We need more opportunity to share. And for me, these Board of Ed meetings feel the only way our experience is heard. I speak tonight to ask you, Dr. Adley, to make the decision to return our children to full in-person learning on January 11th. As we know from Dr. Fauci, pediatricians, scientists, and DPS's own medical advisor, spread is rarely happening in schools. As Dr. Tim explained on the BOE meeting in November, and Governor Lamont has stated numerous times, kids are safer in school than in their broader community. And as Dr. Tim mentioned tonight, the mitigation strategies DPS has employed, they're really working. E-learning remains an enormous stress and challenge for both of my children and our family, as well as hundreds of families across Darien. We worry about the long-term education and mental effects we've lost, lost months of learning will have on all our learners. We ask that you return our children to in-person learning as your communication yesterday indicated and as you shared tonight. I also want to address something I have seen and heard regarding parents who are advocating for the return to in-person learning. A Darien resident wrote something really disturbing on the Teach Our Kids site. Teach Our Kids is a group that was very thoughtfully organized to rally parents who believe our kids should be back to in-person learning. This member of town wrote on this site that the parents who want their kids back in school, quote, blindly attack the administration, teachers, and staff. Their complaints imply that Dr. Adley and his team are trying to screw kids, end quote. Dr. Adley, teachers, and administration board, please let me assure you that this statement could not be further from the truth. Just because we want our children back in school does not imply or mean in any way that we do not profoundly appreciate, respect, and thank you for all of your diligent work. We know you are working insane hours. You are making decisions you never imagined. You are what allow our children to learn, to thrive, and grow in an educational setting. We just ask that they have that opportunity to do so in school. Finally, one last reminder that any family who is against in-person learning or doesn't feel their safe, their child is safe in school can choose to go remote. But parents who want their children in school do not have that free choice unless Dr. Adley reopens our schools. Thank you so much, Board of Ed, for your volunteer work in this tremendously uncertain time. Good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Drew.
Jamie Zionik, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thank you. Jamie Zionik at 15 Holmes Court. I'm co-chair of Darien CBA. We haven't had a chance to discuss it as a group, but I'd like to say I'm strongly, I strongly oppose making facilitators assistant principals. I think it provides an environment of, it decreases inclusion and creates a division between special education and general education. Sue Yam addressed it in the 2014 report that was speeded for by the Board of Ed, and she was opposed. I strongly recommend that the board review that plan again. As also, I agree with Elizabeth Drew as far as teach our kids. We are strongly, I think most of the members that posted that group want to see our children in school, but are very thankful for the contributions of the teachers in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zionik.
Jamison Riley, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name's Jamison Riley, 105 Holmes Ave in Darien. One of the questions that my wife and I had was to Dr. Adley and the board, which both thank you for your time. One of the questions that we had is the continuation of Friday half-days. Even if we do go back to in-school learning for the rest of the school year, there hasn't really been a clarification as to why we're staying half-days on Fridays. And if there is the possibility of this to change, to go back to full days, if the science and medical experts are pointing to being in school is safer, why are we still having half-days on Friday? It doesn't really add up with that. And the second thing is that I just want to say to those that are opposing the social media and saying that that's not a good avenue for us to, to be expressing our opinions and our voice, that it just silences any opposition, dismisses the voice and opinions of others that may oppose what is being presented either by the board or by other people online. For that matter, it isn't just silencing the board, it silences or opposing the board, excuse me. It opposes potentially other people online that are trying to silence it. There should be equal ability for either opinions to be heard. That's the only voice that this opposition of being remote has. As others have voiced, they've all wanted to have some sort of formal avenue of getting to Dr. Adley or being heard at least by Dr. Adley and the board. And I think that, that the whole reason why this group that is obviously not being named, which is Teach Our Kids, it's not being named by the board, but it's, we're obviously being targeted as needs to stop kind of remarks. The whole idea, the whole reason it was created was because we weren't being heard. And if we were being heard, this group probably would have never been created. So that's one of the main things that my wife and I ask is that Dr. Adley and the board, something be set up where we know that we're being heard and then we don't have to be on social media. We prefer to speak directly to the board and, and to Dr. Adley. And if we realize that we're being recognized, then we don't need to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Jonathan Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
My name is John Dunn. I live at 175 Raymond. Tonight, I'll address my comments first to Superintendent Adley and then more broadly to members of the board. We know that our schools are safe environments for our children and that classrooms have not been the main drivers of COVID spread. Darien needs a superintendent who exhibits consistency, transparency, and most importantly, dedication to students. Unfortunately, I believe the administration has rarely demonstrated these traits this year. Instead, Superintendent Alley shows them to say one thing while doing another. It happened in August when he went out against his own previous statements and it happened again at 4:21 PM on New Year's Eve. We deserve better. Superintendent Alley's decision to extend remote learning has an enormous impact on the town. As a follow-up to his comments tonight, I would respectfully request that for the next Board of Ed meeting on January 12th, the administration provide extensive details from his meetings with the Director of Health, the COVID Compliance Liaison, and the District COVID Response Team, including meeting minutes, scientific data, and a list of participants and their specific advice that led to the decision to extend remote learning this week. These types of decisions should not be made behind closed doors. We need to know more. Need full transparency now and going forward. Parents and students should know exactly which individuals and what evidence prevents schools from reopening. If Superintendent Alley can find time to produce and record a puppet show video, he certainly can provide more than just six general bullets on the rationale for continuing remote learning in his email announcements. Now, I would like to speak briefly to members of the board. As concerned parents, we are looking to you for leadership to represent the best interests of students during these tumultuous times. A board member campaigned in the fall with the slogan, "Children First." I don't think there could be more important time than now to put our children first by getting them back into the classrooms. I understand there has been mixed guidance regarding the board's role in overseeing and improving of the superintendent's plans. That being said, Darien parents, Darien students, Darien taxpayers, and Darien voters deserve to know where each one of you falls on this important issue. Even a symbolic, non-binding vote would allow us all to clearly see where you stand. The question is simple. Do you believe all willing and able students should be in school? Yes or no? Now is the time for members of the Board of Education to take a stand and go on record. We need transparency from you as well. Thank you all for listening and Happy New Year. Let's get all our children back in school immediately and permanently.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Kalia Tu Lublin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. My name is Katie Loveland. I live at 24 Maplewood Drive. I'm speaking tonight as a CDSP Special Education Subcommittee Chair. When the district announced in the fall that the hybrid reopening would offer four-day in-person week for specialized learning programs, I was encouraged. This distinction was recognition that certain students, specifically those with the highest support needs, cannot engage in distant, distance learning. It set a precedent. I've received numerous phone calls and emails from parents reacting to what this week's full remote learning has meant for students in these programs. Earlier today, I emailed board members a series of questions that I would like addressed publicly. Here are a few of the sentiments shared with me in recent conversations prompting these questions. We are back to March with no support. Remote learning for these students is going through the motions at best and not worth the effort from teachers or parents. The lack of planning feels like lack of care. They've had 10 months to plan for this scenario and nothing is different than the spring. Listening to these remarks brought to mind another quote often attributed to Gandhi. The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. Overwhelmingly, the parents I spoke with expressed their support for and appreciation of their children's teachers and service providers. They recognized the difficult jobs these professionals face and praised their efforts and dedication. What then is the disconnect? We have learned this week that the problem is beyond a communication issue. It is a lack of planning issue. We are almost a year into this crisis and many students and specialized programs still do not have a plan for a fully remote scenario. Parents have been asking for this plan for months. They were told, no. A schedule emailed days before implementation without parent input does not count as an adequate plan. Parents that do have plans for their students have had to push and push their team to discuss and come up with a plan. This puts parents in a place where theirs who push or who have advocates and lawyers receive. And those who are quiet or wait for the district to act do not. As I said before, we know that our teams are dedicated to our students. That's not the issue. The issue is that communication and planning for children receiving services has been lacking in Darien.
Mrs. Lublin, you're almost at that time.
I ask you now to please remedy this issue before our children lose any more critical time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lori Olson, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Lori Olson. I live at 16 Littlebrook Road North. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this, I'm sorry, I am the co-chair of CDSP. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. For the most part, thank you for addressing most of the concerns we were hoping to hear about tonight regarding the decision to go remote this week. Katie Loveland mentioned some thoughts regarding special ed, special education. But we would like to know more about the discussion on the timing of the decision to go remote this week. More explanation regarding the factors and inputs that inform the decision. We appreciate the complexity of the situation and the many factors that contribute to making the decisions and that the first priority in all decisions is safety. Moving forward, we would ask that there be an ongoing conversation at the table about how, when, and if we get to get more of our students in the buildings more often. Whether it's a hybrid plus approach like New Canaan intends to try or all middlesex in-person or other approaches. We would also request that we hear any new concerns as they relate to upcoming vacations, long weekends as you are able. Lastly, regarding the budget, we are excited that budget season is upon us and that it is time to plan for the future. Thank you again to all of you for your tireless work on behalf of our children and their education.
Thank you, Mrs. Belton.
Melissa Alexandra Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
I'm Melissa Holman Dunn, 175 Raymond Street. I wanted to share some of my concerns with remote learning for elementary school children. The district has implemented many health and safety measures and there's not been any transmission of the disease within the schools. We have figured out that it's safe to have schools open and we must continue to keep our Darien schools open. Over the past few weeks, my eager-to-learn, bright-and-happy kindergartner no longer shows the same enthusiasm for learning as she did in October, November, and part of December. Remote learning feels like a chore to her and she misses her teachers, friends, and classroom. My daughter is highly motivated and completes her tasks and follows instruction from her teacher to a T while remote learning. However, despite the valiant efforts by our main kindergarten teacher, I can see that she has lost her spark. It breaks my heart. I no longer get the exciting and chatty updates from her about her school day and who she played with at recess and what the other kids had for snack. The school day is now simply over. She's only starting her educational journey through the Darien Public School System and I don't want her to have a chip on her shoulder at such a young age. I'm constantly reminding her that both she and her main kindergarten teacher are doing a great job because they are doing a great job, but I wonder how long my child's motivation and stamina for remote learning will last. Early learning is fundamentally a social process and many children, like my daughter, thrive on day-to-day social interaction. In-person school fulfilled other needs for her that are simply irreplaceable. I hope that the district understands what they are doing to the social and emotional well-being of our children with remote learning. I've spoken with many other parents and their children have exhibited far worse behaviors. Here are some direct quotes from other parents of younger elementary school children. My typical easygoing child started exhibiting odd behaviors at the onset of remote learning. And upon taking this child to the doctor, it's all anxiety-related. My children are refusing to participate and are very distracted and angry when they do participate. My child tells me that they are lonely and sad without interacting with other kids their own age. This child has more anxiety when they are remote learning day, have remote learning days, becoming increasingly frustrated and agitated when they cannot get into a meet or speak in person to their teacher. Our children have been through a lot and are very resilient, but DPS needs to put the needs of our children first. School's a safe place and will continue to be a safe place. There is no reason for DPS to go widespread remote for weeks at a time. I hope this information will strike a chord with those in charge and compel them to act differently in the future. Please do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Emily Shelley, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hello?
Yes.
Oh, hi. Okay, this is Emily Shelley. I live on 79 Inwood Road. I first wanted to thank you for taking the time to explain why a last-minute decision was made not to open schools this past Monday. It is helpful to know that there was a pre-scheduled meeting on December 30th that triggered the decision. I hope this type of transparency continues in future correspondence. I would like to express my concerns about the remote environment for all young learners, but most importantly, for my special needs child and all special needs children. I have twin kindergartners, one traditional learner and one with a learning disability. While I have some worries about my typical developing six-year-old and the impact of remote learning on him, I will focus my comments on my special needs child and request that you allow him access to school in-person regardless of this, of the decision made for general education. This is because how important in-person delivery of education is for him and because it can, and because it can be done safely due to, due to the naturally small class sizes. Remote learning has been tough for my special needs child who has visual motor integration difficulties, lacks age-appropriate executive functioning skills, and does not have the ability to sustain attention over long periods of time. Despite help from amazing teachers, remote learning is not an effective way to deliver his education. My son does not sit still, stay in one room very long, and routinely loses tracks, track, loses track of his belongings, affecting his ability to complete, complete tasks or keep up with the class. I have a full-time job, another kindergartner, and a baby and cannot always assist. My son needs in-person attention as prescribed in his IEP and remote learning is not an appropriate education for him. The decision to close in-person learning abruptly also exposed a lack of planning for our most vulnerable population. I have been asking to plan for this remote scenario since June, but have been met with resistance. The willingness to abruptly cut access to in-person learning without a plan in place for special education is concerning. The simple, safe solution is to, at a minimum, bring our most vulnerable group back to in-person learning as soon as possible and keep them there. There are only a handful of kids and it's easy to adhere to physical distancing guidelines. We are no longer in uncharted waters. We know what to do to be safe and we know in-person learning is the only way to provide special needs kids with a free and appropriate education. I'd like to end by thanking you all for all you do and for creating a safe environment for our kids to return to school in-person. It has been, so we are so, I am so thankful that we've gotten this much in-person school so far and I really hope it can continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shelley.
Elizabeth Pauloski, you are unmuted and recognized. We're going to move to Taylor Carter. You are unmuted and recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was muted. Are you there?
Yes.
Sorry. I apologize about that. First, I'd like to thank the Darien Board of Ed and Dr. Adley for agreeing to speak with us tonight or listen to us. I would like to say, Dr. Adley, you sent us a hybrid plan in the beginning of November at the middle school with absolutely no discussion of plan. with absolutely no discussion of plans to move the middle school back to full-time. As a parent of a sixth grader, I'm flabbergasted. We feel as if you've hoodwinked the entire sixth, middle school community. You've had no communication to the parents or students as to what it will take for us to go back full-time, which was furthermore, you, sorry, furthermore, would you, today, when asked this question, fumbled along and basically had no answer to the Board of Ed about what it will take to get our students back. They are missing so much. Hybrid does not work. My student has to have two laptops in order to keep up the work expected due to navigating both Zoom and online work. Furthermore, he has expressed repeatedly how he does not feel like he can participate in class, ask questions because he feels like he's disturbing his fellow classmates who are with, in class. This affects his grade and his morale. And moreover, he has now had over two months of not seeing some of his teachers face-to-face due to the hybrid schedule. This has led to missed assignments, lack of confidence, and pure frustration. The middle school years are an imperative part of social development. By keeping them hybrid, you're hindering our students from making new social connections, again failing our children. The emotional well-being of our children has to be considered. All the top psychologists and pediatricians are in agreement that keeping our kids out of schools is going to increase suicide and mental disorders. All the recent data from Europe and United States and our own town and our own, um, sorry, and our own medical directors have said that kids are safer in school. They are not transmitting this disease. These students need to go back to school. They are not as safe with their friends as they are in school. So we please implore you to look at the data and bring these kids back to school and give our, these parents some communication about what is actually going on. We need transparency. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Polowski.
Taylor Carter, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you. Taylor Carter, three eighty-five Middlesex Road. Dr. Adley and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and Happy New Year. I'm the founder of Teacher, the Teach Our Kids Facebook page and organizer of the petition that made the rounds this week. Teach Our Kids exists because parents who want their kids back in school don't feel they have a voice. As of tonight, three hundred twenty-two individuals from one hundred eighty-two households have signed our letter asking that schools reopen immediately. Sadly, others have declined, not because they disagreed, but for a stated fear of retribution. This fact speaks volumes. The fact that parents are afraid to speak up tonight or even sign a letter for fear of being called a denier, entitled, anti-administration, teacher hater, or worse, simply for the sin of wanting their children to attend school. The culture around this issue has become as unhealthy as the virus itself. But these parents aren't wrong to be upset. There is no data to support keeping our kids at home. From Thanksgiving to Christmas, a month everyone was highly concerned about, student caseloads in Connecticut were lowest among in-person learners despite being the most frequently observed learning model. Remote learners actually reported the most cases in all but one week when hybrid learners were most affected. Further, there is no evidence that COVID is being transmitted in our schools. Whether caseloads go up or down, you, the governor, and experts everywhere have correctly told us that schools are the safest place for kids. I do not understand unless you have changed your mind why they should not go back immediately. In addition to being a more dangerous learning model for our children from a COVID perspective, remote learning has caused great suffering for our children in other ways. Heartbreaking stories have been shared both on the site and privately with me. Stories that lead me to believe the mental health impacts of this pandemic are far worse than the physical ones for our children. Depression, anxiety, withdrawal, trouble sleeping, tantrums, and other regressions are causing damage we won't soon repair. I encourage you to consider a survey of some kind to evaluate this, but much of it could be improved by allowing them to simply resocialize by attending school. New Canaan announced Monday that they intend to return next week with full in-person learning for both their elementary and middle school students. And with a new hybrid plus model for high school students, it puts them in the building seventy-five percent of the time. Our middle and high school students prior to December sixteenth were only attending at a rate of forty percent or two days per week. Darien can and should be a
That time is going.
Time, as we were at times this fall, doing what we know is best for kids and acting in a way that inspires other districts to do the same. I hope to see our kids on the bus Monday morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kelly.
Username The Millers, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, uh, thank you. My name is Mary Jo Miller and I reside at fifty-two Relahan Road. Uh, thank you, board members and administration for allowing this time to speak. You'll indeed hear a lot of frustration tonight, the decision to continue remote learning, especially for our K through five learners. Um, and while I agree that remote learning is not the best state of education for early learners, I'm here to address a different group. The group that is experiencing the most severe setbacks are special education students. And my son is in the GLC program. He's nonverbal, severely autistic, and intellectually disabled. In the five-day period the district went remote before break, I was able to conduct three hours of teaching total, three hours total in five days via Zoom. For a variety of factors, that is, that's all we could do. Since December sixteenth, due to his lack of interventions, structure, and schedules, my son has had increased anxiety, aggression, displays of OCD, disrupted sleep, toilet, toileting setbacks, among other behaviors. It's uncomfortable for me to publicly share my son's struggles, but it's necessary because a reopening plan needs to be in place for our neediest, for their families, for their teachers who are also scrambling. Eight years ago, Darien School District experienced a headline-breaking scandal because it knowingly disadvantaged special needs children, not providing necessary services and violating IEPs. The same is occurring today, not intentional and obviously due to an unprecedented pandemic, but justice damaging and no state waivers to IEPs have been issued. It was quite obvious that over the course of the fall, this district has made many improvements to e-learning for our younger students. While still not ideal, my kindergartner was able to participate independently, however unhappily, for periods of time in live teaching sessions. I emailed our principal to extend my thanks and to acknowledge the planning and execution by her incredibly impressive teacher. For my son, I had to serve as his one-to-one support because he cannot do anything independently. That's not to blame his, his amazing special ed teacher or team, but it did mean squeezing in sessions whenever possible and certainly these hours in delivery message, methods did not meet his, the requirements of his IEP. Other districts in our area are continuing in-person special education programs for their neediest while other children remain remote. Norwalk Superintendent Alexandra Estella recently communicated to her district, and I quote, really, "Beginning January eleventh, all employees not directed to quarantine will report to their work location when a school moves to a full remote learning plan." I'm just going to skip to the end because I have so much more to say. Um, I just want to, um, thank the Board of Ed, the administration, Shirley Klein, who's been working independently and diplomatically with families. I understand this is an incredibly challenging time, but I ask that this population be addressed separately from the general population, that our medical advisors be asked how we can safely continue in-person learning for this particular population that are so vulnerable. We are a small group of families, um, but our message is equally as appointment important. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Christian Dederlezi, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Julie. I'm a parent and taxpayer and tonight I applaud the parents who've summoned the strength to voice the needs of their children. They are devoted parents and they are vested taxpayers and they would like their schools reopened to teach their children whom the CDC also suggests as being a safe and prudent place to put their children's future. Teachers, parents, and administration need to work collectively in an effort to understand, understand, excuse me, the community's needs. In my review of everyone's comments tonight, the common denominator is that parents feel that their voice is not being heard and that is concerning. I've lived in this community for over twenty years and I'm saddened to hear that the parents, the youth in this community is not being served with respect to communication being open. There should be future meetings that allow parents to meet, discuss with the appropriate people who will take incoming calls, respond to emails appropriately, keyword response, and most importantly, care for the children. Common denominator is that the majority of parents in this district would like to see their children attend school and there's ways to do it. We need to work with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dederlezi.
Teresa Vo, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Teresa Vo, twenty-two Circle Road. Um, I'm actually going to say something different. I have a junior at DHS and I'd like to thank you for calling remote this week. Um, with fifteen kids at DHS having tested positive just this week alone, I can't even begin to fathom what the contact tracing would have looked like at the high school this week. My son was contact traced just before Thanksgiving. It was not fun. We did quarantine, we quarantined him correctly and he did not enjoy it. Uh, we went hybrid after that and happy to see fewer kids going into quarantine, quarantine. While there isn't a lot of spread within the schools without changes to the CDC guidelines on who is contact traced, you're still going to see lots of kids being quarantined. You're still going to see lots of staff being quarantined. And this is why we need to make these really tough decisions. So on behalf of my family, I would like to thank the administration for making that very difficult decision this week. As for the parents of the younger kids, I understand where you've been. My twenty-twenty high school graduate was a cancer patient when she was in kindergarten. She missed a lot of school for hospitalizations and chemotherapy treatments. She could not have playdates because she had to worry about getting sick. It was difficult, but I want to assure you all, she's fine now. She made it through. She's in college. She is thriving. We can't let this define our children. We, children are resilient. We can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vo.
There are no most, no more raised hands at this time?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for staying um, on the call and providing all the information. As I said, and I think we all said, we appreciate it. We are listening, we are hearing, and we are seeing all the emails and the information that reporting to us. Thank you very much. With that, uh, we'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Uh, Deb Ritchie, do I have a second? Uh, Dennis Maroni, thank you. Have a good rest. All in favor? I guess I just assumed that. Thank you. It's unanimous. We'll see you all here.